Good to be back to see everybody live and in person, most of you. Uh, before we start, let me give you a few logistics. For our board members and others participating here in the room, you have microphones in front of you. Please be sure to have those on. The red light comes on when your microphone is live. For those who are watching uh on Zoom or YouTube can be able to hear us. Uh, if you are on Zoom, please mute your microphone unless you're speaking. Since we're all here today, except for one member who's absent, not participating. This is not considered a virtual meeting, so we will not be doing uh roll calls for every vote. However, we do need to take the official role to begin, so I'd like to recognize Secretary Teresa Artis Neal for the roll call.
Ms. Artis Neal, present. Mr. Bolick.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Kobe.
Present.
Mr. Cochran. Mr. Davis. Mr. Duckett. Mrs. Hopkins.
Present.
Mr. McCullen. Mr. Meekins.
Present.
Mr. Mosley. Mr. Pryor. Mr. Stevens.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a forum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. As Chair of the Board of Trustees, it's my responsibility to remind all members of the Board of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflicts of interest as required by this act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees meeting. If any member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with respect to any matter coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict or appearance of conflict of interest should be identified at this time. Hearing none. Having already read the materials listed under the Consent Agenda, is there any item that needs to be moved to the discussion portion of either the open or the closed session?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bolick.
Uh, just one item on the uh, uh, if I could just be heard on one item on the uh consent agenda, and that is the acceptance of the uh resolution for the lapel pin. Uh, I just wanted to uh put into the record that the university did not uh pay for those pins, that I personally paid for those pins out of my own pocket uh just as a gesture uh to this Board. Um, I didn't want there to be, I don't think that was mentioned, and I'm not taking, trying to take any undue credit. I just wanted uh it to be on the record that the university did not extend fun, university funds for the purchase of those pins.
Thank you, Trustee. Uh, Bolick, thank you for your contribution for that and others. Um, those items are on the consent agenda. Are the minutes of the January 28th, 2021 meeting of the Board, the mail ballot dated March 9th, the resolution of appreciation for events stepping out as Secretary of the Faculty from 2016 to 2021, the amendment to the trustees regulations on honorary degrees, and the adoption of the lapel pin for trustees? Uh, is there a motion that the consent agenda be approved? Motion. Motion by Trustee Bolick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, multiple places. I'll take uh trustee Pryor. Further discussion debate on the consent agenda. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Consent agenda stands approved. Now I want to welcome our liaison. He's here on Zoom. He's working today as always. But uh trustee David, I'm sorry, Governor David Powers, our Board of Governors. David's our liaison. You'll know he hasn't missed a meeting yet of our Board since he became our liaison. And we're always, David, glad to have you with us. I'd like to call on you now if you have any comments or remarks for the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, sorry I can't be with you. I'd love to be there for the first true meeting in person for a while. Um, and unfortunately, I'm not going to be with you long today. The old work thing is intruding. Um, people who've been in this building will probably say they recognize the potted plant in the background. That's a, that's a dead giveaway uh around this building, some down at Legislative Building. Uh, just want to share a few things with you today. First and foremost, I feel like we are in really good shape with our uh agenda at the Legislature. I'm really hopeful with the, with the amount of non-recurring revenue that's available, that we'll have significant R and R money available. So I feel like that we're um uh in a good place there. Uh, we've had good reception for our policy issues uh at the Legislature. And um uh as you may have seen, the Legislature has, uh, both Houses have approved their Board of Governors appointments for this year. So uh off to a good start as far as our legislative agenda goes down here. Uh, real excited about that. Um. Uh, I know you're all interested in, in trustee appointments. We are winding down that process. Um, we've got a, a small group of leadership meeting next week to kind of start to uh wind that up. And we will be making our recommendations uh at our April Board Meeting. Um, uh, I have talked to both the Chairman and, and the Chancellor and told them that um, um, you know, we'll have ample time to talk uh uh before those appointments are announced. And there'll be no surprises on, on anyone, so just want to reinforce it. We'll look forward to working with you guys to um get a great group of uh of new trustees. You've got three trustees not eligible for appointment, actually uh, uh, four, I think, with one of your legislative appointments. So uh uh by definition, there will be a new group of trustees coming on. So I look forward to working, continuing to work with the, with the Chancellor and the Chairman to uh make sure you have a great group of new trustees coming on to work with. Um, we did not meet in March, so there's really not a lot of news coming from the Board of Governors. But uh I want to end by saying on behalf of my colleagues, thanking you all. Once again, the last year has been extremely difficult. And um I cannot be prouder of our system as a whole and each one of our constituent um universities and affiliates, certainly UNC Healthcare falls into that group, of the way everybody has pulled together and come through this uh, this very trying time. Um, I think we're emerging from this in as good a shape as we possibly could have been. Uh, it's been difficult. I know all kinds of new challenges. So I want to uh uh give you personally my thanks and on behalf of the Board, our thanks for um continuing to soldier on and um keep a first-class educational environment going for our students and uh continuing to prepare for what will, I hope, will be just a fantastic future once we're able to uh sit in classrooms again, sit in boardrooms again, and uh uh have a little more fulsome discussion on, on issues face to face. But uh thank you, thank you for the work you've done uh over this past very, very difficult year. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll stay on for a few minutes and I'll kind of quietly sign off when I need to. But um uh that's all I've got for you this morning.
Thank you, Governor Powers, always. We appreciate your, the time you spend as the Governor, and particularly the time you spend with us as your, as our liaison. Thank you for what you're doing down in General Assembly for. That's, that's critical with this year of all of you.
And I will say one more thing. I, I did not get my light blue tie this morning, but I do have a light blue shirt on, so I'm, I'm there.
Very good, very good. Thank you again.
Okay.
I want to start our meeting by recognizing that this Tuesday, March 23rd, was the one-year anniversary to the start of expanded remote instruction at our university. It's been a year of resilience, dedication, and commitment to our mission during this global pandemic. We're grateful to the entire community for their efforts. As a Board, we're heartened to see the decreasing numbers of cases in Orange County and in our state. We urge everyone to receive the vaccination as soon as it's available. As soon as I got eligible and could schedule a time, my wife and I did it. We're a month past our second shot. I tell you, you can feel a lot better once you've done that. So encourage everyone who's not gotten their shot, as soon as you're eligible, please do so. It's, it's critical. I want to thank the members of the university and especially our students for their faithfulness during this pandemic and following our community standards. We know it's not been easy, but your efforts are making a difference. I know I speak to the entire Board when I say that we appreciate the sacrifices you've made to further our mission of teaching, research, and public service. We look forward today to the Chancellor's presentation on plans for the fall semester. While there remain many unknowns, we are encouraged by the news that we'll be able to welcome students, faculty, and staff back to a much more typical fall semester. We've seen the effort, the effects of this year, however, on mental health, on our budget, and on our community as a whole. As our Chancellor has said before many times, the best Carolina experience is in-person here on campus. As a Board, we wholeheartedly endorse every effort to bring our students back to campus safely. As a Board, we're excited for this year's May commencement celebration of the class of 2021. Dr. Fauci and Dr. Corbett will be amazing speakers, and their perspective in fighting this pandemic will surely inspire our graduates. We look forward to gathering as a community, both virtually and watching our graduates and their family members in Keenan Stadium. Also, it was great to see in the Wall Street Journal last week, Carolina was named the number-one large college in the South. Let me say that again, the number-one large college in the South. This is a testament to the hard work and dedication of our faculty, staff, and students. We congratulate you all. Finally, I want to speak specifically to the Asian-American community here at Carolina. The past few weeks and more broadly this past year have been tragic for you. The violence perpetrated against this community is just unacceptable. And we stand in solidarity and in support of the Asian-American community. We're committed to the work of our Asian-American center, and we thank Dr. Heidi Kim for her leadership. I want to thank all the staff who helped make this meeting possible. We appreciate their good efforts to make it run smoothly. Now I want in just a few minutes to recognize Reeves Mosley, our student body president. Turn it over to him for his final remarks. He ends his term as a Board Member today. At our next meeting in May, he'll successfully be sworn in. But Reeves, on a personal note, I want to thank you for your diligence and hard work and steadfast leadership this past year. I think we can truly say no student body president has had to address the wide range of topics and challenges that you have faced. And we know you faced them with a great deal of energy and courage and, and we appreciate all your efforts. It's been honored to have you a member of this Board, and we truly thank you for your service and wish you well as you graduate and I know stay engaged in this community. Let me now call on Reeves.
Thank you so much for that, Chair Stevens. Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to see you again and address you one final time as student body president of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. I apologize in advance for these remarks might be a little more lengthy than usual just given the circumstances. As my time on this Board comes to a close, I just want to say what an honor it has been to learn from and work from with each and every one of you sitting in support today. Despite the unique circumstances of the past year, this Board, and my administration, and the university as a whole, have been able to accomplish so many fantastic things for the betterment of students, staff, faculty, and the Carolina community. This year has allowed us to face all these unprecedented challenges head-on as we bear witness to the difficulties faced by so many students and community members. However, because of our collective effort, we can now move forward and be there for those who need it the most, thanks to so many new programs and developments introduced this year. To start the year, we effectively lifted the 16-year moratorium on renaming buildings on the UNC Chapel Hill campus. From the time this decision was made in June to the present, I have served as one of the two student representatives on the renaming committee who assisted in establishing a policy for renaming buildings on UNC campus. And I'm looking forward to the continued work for a formal structure allowing for positive change that will affect UNC for generations. In addition to working with media regarding our COVID-19 efforts, I was able to serve as a co-chair of the Campus and Community Advisory Council, a council charged with making recommendations to Chancellor Gus Woods for university decisions under the COVID-19 pandemic. In this capacity, we made recommendations on wellness days, flexible grading accommodations, housing policies, community standards, vaccination and testing procedures, and a way forward in the face of COVID. The COVID-19 pandemic saw a stark rise in mental health issues facing college students to the extent that one in four adults aged 18 to 24 seriously considered suicide in the past year. As such, I was proud to advocate as a co-chair of the Tuition and Fee Advisory Task Force and Student Fee Advisory Subcommittee for the university to raise the mental health fee, which will go toward increasing resources for students and specifically students of color who have been disproportionately impacted by this pandemic. The administration was also able to distribute IRB-approved surveys that will aim to assess mental health needs of minority students on campus. These findings will be shared with other universities to increase awareness and will aid future leaders in addressing the disproportionate impact of the pandemic on minority communities. As an administration, we also created a comprehensive memo assessing broader student wellness needs during the pandemic and held a town hall with administrators to address student concerns. Creating avenues for students to engage with administrators, senior leadership, and other student leaders is critical to maintaining an open line of communication between students and decision-makers. These steps have allowed student voices to be heard during a time filled with uncertainty, trepidation, and fear on campus. Aside from the pandemic, a presidential election took place during my term. My administration consistently worked hard to increase awareness and encourage activism despite the circumstances. Additionally, we coordinated with other organizations off-campus to register voters, especially in residence halls, urged students to vote, and dispersed information about the election on multiple platforms frequented by students. We also worked hard to ensure that students were included in the decision-making processes, both locally and at the national level. Over this past year, our State and External Affairs Task Force strengthened our administration's relationship with the UNC Federal Affairs Office, advocated on behalf of international students as COVID visa policies impacted their ability to have the normal Carolina experience, and is currently working on establishing a Merit Student Advisory Council. Essential to our administration's success have been the relationships I have forged with student body presidents across the UNC system over the past year. The collective commitment of this system-wide student body presence to advocate for student voices, whether that be directed at university leadership through joint initiatives or the Board of Governors through the Association of Student Governments Representative, has been critical in raising awareness of a broad range of issues facing hundreds of thousands of students. And I look forward to seeing incoming student body presidents across the system build upon these relationships. My party's suggestion to the Board of Trustees is to add a second seat for the GPSF president. Not only would this improve upon the experience for future student body presidents and even Board members, but it would elevate the voices of graduate and professional students who are an essential part of the Carolina community with their own unique needs and lived experiences. And finally, this university has given me so much over these past four years, and I hope I was able to give something back by serving in this role. I never imagined that my term would look like this, whether it be a global pandemic, national race reckoning, historic election, or any of the immense obstacles we face as a university. But I am so incredibly honored that the student body tasked me with this daunting challenge and high honor, and also recognize that there's so much more work to be done. It has been the absolute honor of my life serving as UNC student body president, and I cannot thank you all enough for working with me to ensure the betterment for our community this past year. Thank you all again, and I'll see you at graduation.
Now I'd like to recognize Secretary Teresa Artis Neal for a resolution.
Resolution of appreciation, Reeves Mosley, the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill Board of Trustees. Whereas Reeves Mosley served as President of the University Student Body during the 2020, 2021 academic year and spoke ardently and frankly on behalf of all his fellow students as a valued member of the university's Board of Trustees. And whereas Mr. Mosley unfailingly focused on representing students across our university by identifying, uplifting, and supporting the voices of all Carolina students. Whereas Mr. Mosley's personal commitment to increase diversity and advocacy for underrepresented communities and organizations helped advance a culture of belonging, kindness, and respect for Carolina students. Whereas Mr. Mosley will be remembered as a student who listened to others, advocated for changes that impact student life in a positive way, and assured under his leadership that student government was a platform students could trust to empower and uplift their voices. Whereas Mr. Mosley rose to the greatest leadership challenge faced by any recent president of university student body by assisting university leadership as it worked tirelessly to continue Carolina's mission of teaching, research, and service in new ways as the community faced a new world brought about by the novel coronavirus virus. And whereas Mr. Mosley helped the university navigate the COVID-19 pandemic through his significant contributions as a co-chair to the Chancellor's Campus and Community Advisory Committee, which voiced concerns and raised suggestions of students on topics ranging from COVID-19 testing and mental health resources to academic requirements and the representation of marginalized communities who have been disproportionately impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Mr. Mosley served as a Buckley Public Service Scholar and is currently a Keenan Scholar in Business and Public Policy, committing his years on campus to serving the campus community through the servant leadership and policy development. And whereas Mr. Mosley, as an undergraduate senator, introduced the university's first Mental Health Awareness Week bill to promote healthy living on and around campus, ultimately informing the university decision to adopt Wellness Days as part of its response to the COVID-19 pandemic and the need for student wellness. And whereas Mr. Mosley demonstrated courage and selflessness in, in his Who I Am op-ed in the Daily Tar Heel, creating space for fellow students to be themselves and live their own truths during their time at Carolina and beyond. And whereas Mr. Mosley, during his service as a trustee, provided valuable counsel and input to the Board and always did so while displaying leadership, compassion, and wit. And from his first meeting, made it readily apparent why his fellow students elected him as president of the student body. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill thanks and congratulates Reeves Mosley for his outstanding service as student body president and as a trustee, and wishes him all the best as a soon-to-be Tar Heel alumnus.
Chairman. Chairman, uh, this is trustee Davis. I move adoption of the resolution by acclamation.
I have a motion to approve the resolution by acclamations or second. Any further discussion, debate? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I obviously approve unanimously. Reeves, congratulations again, and thank you for your service. Let me now introduce the Chancellor for his remarks and also an update on the fall semester, and then introduce our, our program for the day. Chancellor Gus.
Thank you, Chair Stevens, and thank you, Reeves. Uh, you've done an outstanding job as our student body president and uh Board of Trustee member. And you're going to go on to do great things and serve as a wonderful ambassador for the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, so thank you. I want to also echo uh Chair Stevens' remarks um and express my support for our Asian-American community here at Carolina. It was an honor to be part of the vigil that was held by our Asian-American Center last week after the attacks in Atlanta. And after that event, I expressed to Heidi Kim, uh, our Center Director, that as the father of an Asian-American daughter, I'm learning from her and from others at the Center, not just about how to be a better campus leader, but about how to be a parent uh of my daughter. And so I want to thank uh their efforts, and um I know that Amy expresses her appreciation as well. As Bob and Sibby and I said in our letter to the campus community uh just a few weeks ago, uh, we're committed to supporting the Center and its critical work for our students. So we're now halfway through the spring semester. And it's uh been wonderful seeing more of our students, faculty, and staff out and about around our, our campus uh and back into our, our classrooms, albeit in a limited capacity. Our Carolina Together Testing Program has worked exactly as we had planned and exactly as we had hoped that it would, identifying cases and limiting the spread of uh coronavirus on our campus. As of this week, we've conducted more than 123,000 tests, and our positivity rate among our campus community members is 0.24%. So many of our faculty, staff, and students are now vaccinated. And soon, uh, we will open our student vaccination clinic on campus. We received word just yesterday from the System Office that the Department of Health and Human Services will be notifying us this afternoon that we've received an initial, an initial allocation of 2,000 doses of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And we'll begin vaccinating eligible students uh at our on-campus uh vaccination center starting March 31st, so uh next week. It was moved up from April 7th to next week, so this is really uh encouraging news. We, we have been encouraging everyone uh within our campus community to uh receive the vaccination as soon as they're eligible. This is a critical step uh in ending the pandemic and returning to normal campus operations as soon as possible. And I want to thank our campus community for their incredible efforts uh this semester and say a special thanks uh as Chair Stevens did to our students. They've been resilient, uh, they sacrificed uh uh and uh and had, you know, their efforts are really making a difference here on our campus. It hasn't been easy, uh, but we're all grateful for their commitment. This is important as we think about how the fall semester is going to look. And we've continued to consult with our public health and uh faculty experts uh as we anticipate for a, a return to full in-person instruction and normal campus operations uh for this fall with uh many uh measures likely still in place uh to protect against the potential spread of, of the virus. And that's what we're expected to do. That's what we must do as we plan for the fall semester. It's what the UNC system expects of us. It's what our students and their parents are expecting of us. And we're confident that we're going to be able to get there. At my installation back in October, I committed to increasing our first-year class size for the next four years, building the largest-ever Carolina undergraduate community. Our admissions numbers are strong. We were up 20% uh this year in the number of applicants. Nearly 54,000 applications came in for uh for undergraduate admissions. Rachel Feldman is leading a working group that's planning on how we can sustainably grow our admissions, our, our undergraduate enrollment. She will present these plans at next, at our next Board Meeting in May, and I want to thank trustee Duckett uh for serving in this working group. And this group is focusing on both the, the short-term and the long-term growth in a variety of areas, including increased revenues, institutional reputation, and ensuring an outstanding experience in and beyond the classroom for undergraduate students. But we will grow, but we have to do it responsibly. And we're seeing encouraging numbers for this year. Last fall, we had our highest enrollment ever. We had 4,444 undergraduate students uh enroll last fall uh in that first-year class. For the spring of 2021, withdrawals uh are down for our undergraduates by 55%, meaning we're retaining those students who are enrolled uh in their uh second semester. And at this early stage, we're seeing a 3% increase in yield of those accepted first-year undergraduate applicants for this incoming class. So those who have been offered admission were up about 3% from where we were at about April 1st uh of last year. And so we feel optimistic that we're going to have an incredible new class of students uh entering Carolina uh in mid-August. And this is good news as we think about uh what that enrollment increase really means. Uh, our state's expanding, and Carolina must expand as well. And we must continue to serve the people of North Carolina and train the next generation of leaders. To do this responsibly, we need resources. We were encouraged by Governor Cooper's proposed budget, which was announced yesterday, which included a proposed increase of salaries for our employees by 5% in fiscal year 2122 and a 2.5% increase the following year for a total of more than 7.5% over two years. The proposed budget also includes a $1,000 bonus for these employees and an additional $2,000 bonus to be paid in this year, fiscal year 2021, for university and state-funded local community college employees. The proposed budget also invests uh in our infrastructure. The proposed $393 million over the biennium in repairs and renovations, providing $143 million for UNC system projects. And it proposes to place a $4.7 billion bond on the ballot in November to address infrastructure projects, including $783 million for the UNC system. While I recognize that we have a long ways to go, uh, I look forward to continuing to advocate uh for this strong budget um such as has been proposed by the Governor for higher education for the UNC system. This is what we need here at Carolina. I believe that Carolina is emerging even stronger from the pandemic. Our research numbers are up again, likely to set another record in uh, in the number of, in the amount of research funding coming into the university. Enrollment is up, as I've just said. Our campaign, as David Ruth mentioned yesterday, is strong, has remained strong throughout the campaign. And we're balancing our budget over the next year, as, as Nate Knutman talked about yesterday. We're positioning ourselves for the future. I often reference the Wayne Gretzky quote about why he was such a great hockey player. And he said, "I, I skate to where the puck is going to be." We have to think ahead. We have to know where the puck's going to be, and we have to get there. For new technologies that will allow us to deliver quality education to more people, asking questions like, "How do we respond to the demands of our students? How do we equip them with the skills that they need? What are the new students that we need to deliver our world-class education to?" What are the new students that we need to deliver our world-class education to? And how are we going to be held accountable and measure success?" These questions are guiding our thinking as we prepare for the fall and for the future and beyond. Before introducing this morning's guest speakers, I'm going to give one example of how we're leading in positioning not only UNC Chapel Hill, but positioning society for the future. It's called READY, which stands for Rapidly Emerging Antiviral Drug Discovery Initiative. Many of you have heard about this already. This is where three schools using the convergent science approach that we're so proud of here at Carolina come together, School of Medicine, Public Health, and Pharmacy, launching a global public-private partnership aimed at developing novel antiviral drugs before the inevitable next pandemic. Carolina has the talent and is focused on this opportunity to secure the additional resources to lead globally in how we prepare for the future. The same faculty who've been demonstrating the effectiveness of remdesivir and who sped up the development of the vaccines are also working to ensure that we never find ourselves in this situation again, to be ill-prepared for the next pandemic. To cite Senator Richard Burr, who I and others here today have spent significant time with on this initiative, he said, "This is a generational opportunity that needs to happen." Along with Dr. Anthony Fauci, who will be one of our two commencement speakers in May, he said, along with Senator Burr, that Carolina is the place that can get this done. We're preparing for where the puck is going to be. Through Carolina Next, we have a roadmap that shows where we're going. We are enhancing ways to serve to benefit society, which is strategic initiative number six in that plan, and we're amplifying the impact of our new discoveries as the leading global public research university in the nation. And we're structuring the commercialization of our research to best position our work in the marketplace. We're talking seriously about the need to be a job creator and to drive economic growth in our state. As we talked about in our University Affairs Committee meeting yesterday, our new Carolina Economic Development Strategy is a partnership to revitalize downtown Chapel Hill and to further economic development in our town, and we will leverage our ability to attract talent and inspire innovation here in Chapel Hill. And so today, I'm going to turn the program over to two speakers. Judith Cohn, our Vice Chancellor for Innovation, Entrepreneurship, and Economic Development, who has changed the culture here at Carolina through an initiative and a strategy that she coined Innovate Carolina several years ago. She's going to talk about the past 11 years here at Carolina, her leadership of Innovate Carolina, and the vision that she has led that strategic initiative around, serve to benefit society, and she's championed this over the past year, even throughout the pandemic. As most of you know, Judith will be retiring from Carolina on April 1st, so it's an honor to have her join us today. And Judith will be joined today by Anita Brown Graham, the Gladys Hall Coach, Distinguished Professor of Public Law and Government, and Director of NC Impact. Anita is leading a new initiative that we're introducing today called Carolina Across 100, which we are officially launching today. This initiative aims to reach all 100 counties in North Carolina so that we can better understand their needs and have a larger impact that the citizens of North Carolina should expect of this great global public research university. So I'm now going to turn the floor over to Judith and Anita.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate that. So we're going to discuss, as Kevin said, Carolina Next, and I hope you can hear me out. And number six, serve to benefit society. And then we're also going to talk about the innovation infrastructure here at Carolina. And most of you know this, so this will be rehashing a lot of things that you've been part of building. One of the interesting challenges of this initiative, serve to benefit society, is that it's a comprehensive topic. It covers everything that we do, and UNC Chapel Hill serves all of North Carolina and the world in many, many ways. Each of our schools has its own strategies for outreach, engagement, translation, and innovation. Each of you could most likely list any number of ways UNC is directly working on the local level, whether it's finding ways to stop coastal erosion, or dental students providing breakthrough services using 3D technology in local communities that lack dental care, or the many services coming out of the five life science schools, and on and on. We're aware of the work of the School of Government. We're going to hear about this amazing program right hot off the press in a little bit. And there are so many projects, and it's just very hard to wrap our hands around this. This is a great thing, but it brings up questions about understanding this and coordinating and maximizing work across units on campus, and the connections between communities and Carolina. How does all of this fit together for maximum benefit, for a maximum impact? How does the university align its resources and processes with its stated missions? Let's review, next slide, the three missions of UNC. We've heard them talked about three times today already. We all know them, we hear them again and again. And if we were to describe how the university demonstrates its commitment to world-class teaching, it's obvious how the resources and processes align. We have an amazing admissions office, graduate school buildings, all types of classrooms, labs, faculty, graduate students as teaching assistants, libraries, continual revitalization of the curriculum to keep it relevant, and the tools needed for blended and hybrid learning. The provost is the chief academic officer, and it is his job to help the units recruit and retain the best faculty and students in the world. And this is a juggernaut. Carolina, even in the midst of the pandemic, recruited great students, and we just heard about that. The processes that support the mission of teaching are many and are continually refreshed to ensure things run smoothly. The same thing can be said for the second mission, research. If we were to describe how the university demonstrates its commitment to world-class research, it would be very obvious how the resources and processes have been aligned. We have world-class faculty, students, post-docs, state-of-the-art buildings and equipment. The processes that support the 1 billion-plus annual research endeavor are many and require much financial and technical investment. It's obvious that Carolina is committed to research because it aligns its resources and processes. Now for the third mission, service. Think about what is in place to support service. This service mission is where our office comes into play. 11 years ago, Carolina recognized it needed to put more effort into the third mission and build the infrastructure of support needed to maximize impact. It realized that its schools and centers were significantly contributing, but there was more this university could do and needed to do and would do. It made a commitment to innovation. It wanted to better translate ideas and research born at Carolina into products, services, and methods to improve the lives of the people of North Carolina and beyond. In 2009, Chancellor Holden Dorf asked me to become Carolina's first chief innovation officer. With the help of 118 members of the Board of Trustees, faculty, students, alumni, and friends of the university, we entered into phase one of the innovation agenda. Our goal was to strengthen an intentional culture of innovation and entrepreneurship. These 100-plus people created the first innovation roadmap for Carolina. We wanted innovation to become mainstream, to be part of the DNA, or said another way, the weave and fabric of Carolina. We wanted the entrepreneurial mindset and skillset to become prevalent. We wanted to be able to improve our odds of success and infuse a sense of urgency when addressing the serious issues facing the world. That phase ended up being quite successful as measured by the number of students, faculty, and staff taking classes and workshops, engaging in identifying needs, and bringing creative solutions to bear, the number of startups, the funds raised, the jobs created, and the revenue generated, the number of social ventures that created greater shared prosperity and opportunity for more people. In 2015, under the leadership of Carol Folt, we entered into phase two, institutionalize the innovation infrastructure. Any organization can have a fad or a trend that fade over time. We wanted to make sure that innovation, translation of ideas into practical benefit for the public good, was gaining its equal place with research and teaching as a fully supported mission. The first VC of innovation, entrepreneurship, and economic development was created to focus attention and elevate the strategic priority of the work today. In 2021, with your help, Chancellor Gusswitz is envisioning phase three. He's repeatedly stated his commitment to innovation, entrepreneurship, and economic development, and you heard some of this yesterday, you're going to hear more today, being very thoughtful and deliberative about envisioning the next steps. With the BOT, he will ensure that this university aligns its resources and processes to support the innovation infrastructure for the future. So as we look at the complex needs facing today, we realize that people look more and more to our great research universities to be part of solving these issues. No other case need be referenced than the COVID-19 pandemic. You saw how we played such a major role in that. The interplay between governments, industry, and social sector, and higher education has been shifting for the past 30 years. Industry used to allocate its R&amp;D funding with 80% going to its own research. Today, it is the reverse. This new industrial business model relies more heavily on university research and the entrepreneurial sector for innovation than ever before. This shift places greater responsibility on our university research to be applied, and for our university to have a robust innovation infrastructure of support to feed the research pipeline into the developmental stages, so the public will have the innovations it needs for better lives. Further, it behooves us to promote the entrepreneurial mindset and skillset to feed the R&amp;D pipelines and to grow ventures for the long term. The past 11 years have demonstrated Carolina's recognition of its greater role and responsibility. Please go to innovate.unc.edu to find detailed information. So let's go back to our strategic plan, serve to benefit society. Next slide. The Carolina Strategic Plan covers the third mission, and we have been working on that together at Pan University for the past year. There are three objectives that address the methodologies and infrastructure needed to support the variety of pressing problems and ways of addressing those. Objective one is engage with others. This is common sense. Solutions are more effective when they result from collaboration among diverse people, especially those to be impacted. Objective 6.2 is achieve impact by providing platforms for faculty. The plan mandates the implementation of proven methodologies and common tools to advance greater impact throughout the university. And 6.3 is grow partnerships with business, nonprofits, and government. Next slide. No doubt, you've seen similar slides when you're looking at Carolina Next. It requires cross-campus leadership, and you can see from this diagram that we have liaisons across every department and unit, and we have leads coming from across the campus. This plan works because we're a vertical organization. Most universities are siloed and vertical, but this plan weaves us together in horizontal connections between people and common objectives. The result is greater understanding, shared expertise, reduced costs and redundancies, and greater impact. Next slide. So our office has been leading this, as we said. The Vice Chancellor's Office for IED, or as we call it Innovate Carolina, has as its mission to be the bridge between research and the market, between the university and delivering practical value to the people it serves. Next slide. So how have we done this? For each target audience, faculty, staff, students, and community members, we have various programs and services. And we target these programs and services to various sectors, such as university-based IP startups, student startups, social innovations, artistic entrepreneurship, human life science, the environment, et cetera. In order to report impact, at the beginning, we created a research and impact group and a communication group. These are some of these platforms that will be needed for number six. We have a longitudinal database tracking more than 850 startups. In the year 2020, these startups had annual revenue of $15.3 billion, 13,000 employees in North Carolina, and 88,000 globally. We read about the recruitment stories, about how Google is going to bring 1,000 jobs, and that's great. In 2020, the more than 150 companies that have come out of launch Chapel Hill Accelerator on Franklin Street, a joint venture of the University of the Town and the County, had 802 employees in that one year and revenue of $69 million. IED or Innovate Carolina has invested in capacity for addressing the many complex, often viewed as intractable, economic, environmental, social, and political challenges of the time. We invested in social innovation as a core competency that serves as both a process and an outcome for change. We hired expertise in design thinking and system thinking as part of the team. So why is this so important? We now have the convening platform for the integration of knowledge, techniques, and expertise from multiple disciplines to address the most compelling challenges. Faculty seek and want support to do this. Research agendas are broadening in interdisciplinary and sometimes transdisciplinary ways. We think of the Harvey Award winners or the Creative Hub examples. Federal grants are moving in this direction as well. Developing student capacity is important here, too. The Graduate Certificate in Innovation for the Public Good had immediately sold out 50 slots within a day. This is not collaboration as usual, rather it is intentional reimagining of how we work together. Carolina Next and the pandemic have given us the opportunity to test this approach. Next slide. And the BCS Office of Innovate Carolina has built up the technology commercialization capacity of the university. We've brought in experts from the industry, hired some of the best tech transfer experts in the country, expanded the Kickstart Venture Services Program, and opened an accelerator in the Genome Building for faculty IP-based startups. Just a few weeks ago, we crossed over the $100 million mark in licensing revenue brought into the university. Not shown here on this slide is Stride Bio's recent Series B financing of $81.5 million for their novel gene therapy platform. Private sector entities have their eye on UNC and are investing in our companies. Our moving next door to us on Franklin and Rosemary, Grub Properties is part of a more than $100 million renovation project for the 100 block of Rosemary with the city. A private wetland life science accelerator is planning to be part of the new science building that will be part of that redevelopment. This is all on the dollar of other people, but it was catalyzed by Carolina. This region and this state is burgeoning in the life science arena, with UNC at the heart of gene therapy and other areas. Esq Bio was purchased for $4 billion by Bayer. Fuji Film is bringing in a $2 billion cell culture facility. Last year, Pfizer expanded its manufacturing facilities. Alexandria Innovation Center is rapidly expanding in the RTP. Biolabs in Durham is out of space and looking for expansion facilities, and Carolina is a major region this is happening. In order to catalyze and benefit from North Carolina becoming one of the life science hubs in the country, we must continue our work on and off campus. Next slide. Just as we have infrastructure to support teaching and research, we have created a network of central and decentralized hubs on campus, all interwoven to better serve the public good. The future looks bright for us at Carolina and for North Carolina. This puts even greater pressure on leadership to strategically plan and align the resources and processes to keep pace with and get out in front of the trends and innovation, to skate where the puck is going to be. Thank you. And I have the privilege of in bringing up Anita. She's going to tell you about a very exciting new project that fits beautifully into this and brings this to life. So Anita, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the administration, students, guests, I could not be more honored to be with you here this morning, or quite frankly, more thrilled, like coming out of my skin thrilled, to talk to you about this chancellor's initiative. But let me start by saying thank you to Judith, whose shoulders we all stand on. It's the infrastructure for innovation and the culture for collaboration. that you have worked so hard to build that makes this moment even possible. I want to try to do four things pretty quickly with you as we talk through Carolina Cross 100. I want to give you a sense of what it is. I want to just spend a little bit of time talking about why now is the moment. I then want to try to make it feel more tangible to you. So I'll walk you through an example. I'm not going to quiz you at the end to find out whether I succeeded. But I will at the very end just talk about what I think success would mean for this chancellor's initiative. So let me start next slide with, what is this? I don't know what you thought when you heard Chancellor Gusco was say earlier that we were going to be announcing the launch of Carolina Cross 100. But what I hope you will think of, what I hope will immediately come to mind over the next five years when you hear that phrase is a clear and compelling narrative around how your university is on the ground in communities all across North Carolina, collaborating with the people who live in those communities in ways that respond to the greatest opportunities and challenges those communities will continue to face in a post-COVID-19 world. Why now? Next slide. It is true that Carolina has always risen to the occasion when our state has needed us most. It is also true that it would not have been inappropriate or even unexpected given what Judith shared about the three strategic objectives in pillar six of Carolina Next for this university to say, in addition to all the other amazing things we do as the university for North Carolina, as our chancellor is so fond of saying, we need a particular emphasis on the state of North Carolina. That would have worked 16 months ago. But the reality is what would not have been unexpected and what would have been appropriate 16 months ago is downright essential to me. My friend Mark Mears and David Ruth's colleague reminded me yesterday that at every crisis slash inflection point that this state has faced, this university has stepped up to respond. We talked about the economy being in shambles after the Civil War and the work that this university did to repair that economy. We talked about the 1930s when local governments were going bankrupt across North Carolina and this university stepped up in a creative way to create the Institute of Government, now School of Government. We talked about what happened during World War II when people were shocked at the number of North Carolinians who received a medical deferment because of health concerns and this university stepped up. Those were all inflection points for the state. They were also inflection points for the university. We've talked a little bit here today about what COVID-19 has meant for this campus. And I wouldn't diminish by any stretch how challenging it has been. But all of you know that it has been challenging for everybody in every aspect of our lives. And yet there are people and there are places that have faced a disproportionate burden of COVID-19. We've got communities where we are going to have to work really hard to figure out how do we open those small businesses that have shuttered. We're going to have to think about how we retrain people for jobs they've lost that are not coming back. We're going to think a little bit, we hope, about how we deal with learning loss, particularly in K through 12, where people are beginning to say this could be a generational issue. I'm sorry, but the university for North Carolina is not going to allow our young people in this state to suffer generationally because of COVID-19. We have got to respond. So this is the moment. So how will we do this work? We're going to focus on collaboratives, cohorts of communities that come to work, come together to work on common challenges. We're going to, as we have been doing on campus, bring people together in communities from different sectors, geographic boundaries and perspectives, all of them coming together to tackle, not the challenges we tell them they should tackle, but the challenges they tell us they need our help and support in tackling. And we will do that with broad-based interdisciplinary teams from across this campus. So let me, next slide please. Let me try to give you an example of this because you may be saying to yourself, okay, 100 counties, five years, that's not going to work. We actually have a model for doing this kind of work. We engaged the state of North Carolina's communities for a two-year peer learning effort in response to what they had been telling us was an emergent crisis that no one discipline could help them respond to. We called it the opioid response project. We issued a request for proposals. We got proposals from over half the counties in North Carolina. We picked 10 communities which represented more than 10 counties, as you can see. Some of these counties decided to come together in multi-county collaborative. And we gave them support for coordination of the collaborations in their communities. You all understand, everybody's busy, collaboration doesn't just happen. Somebody's got to wake up in the morning figuring out how to do it. We gave them expertise in two different ways, and this is really important to understanding the model. We had lots of people on this campus who could give them evidence-based strategies for dealing with the opioid response. But actually, equally important was giving them evidence-based strategies for just collaborating productively in their communities. At the end of two years, here's what they said. The School of Pharmacy conducted an evaluation for us. 100% of people who participated said it was highly successful for their communities. 100% of people who participated in this survey said they would recommend to others in their communities to participate in this kind of project. And then what was really important is how many of them pointed to the fact that not only did we build capacity and muscle memory for this kind of work together, but we actually left them with a sustainability trajectory that allowed the work to continue after the end of the project. So trustee Ballack, you know that Cumberland County was one of the counties that participated. By the time we left Cumberland County, they had secured an additional grant to carry on the work. That grant was for $1 million. That's how we need to help communities in North Carolina. So we'll go in and we will do these kinds of peer learning activities where we work in the communities. We also help these communities to work with each other. We bring them together to learn from each other. We will be across North Carolina, connecting North Carolina, supporting North Carolina in a way that I think will really benefit both us and the state. Next slide. So I just want to show you this slide very quickly because we recently launched a new, one of these peer learning collaboratives. And if you have any questions about whether there'll be an appetite for this kind of work from our university, let me just tell you, all those counties shaded in blue are counties that registered to participate in an informational webinar about this new opportunity. The applications are due on March 29th, so I can't tell you how many will apply. But what I can tell you is there is a huge appetite for support from this campus. And our chancellor has made it possible to do this kind of work on a much greater level than could have been done without him. So thank you, chancellor. Last slide please, I think. So I went through that pretty quickly and I think it's always important to start with the end in mind when you do these kinds of initiatives. So what do we think will be different at the end of five years? Certainly UNC has always and will always be engaged in lots of community partnerships. This is not meant to detract from that. In fact, it's meant to embrace and support and strengthen that. But I think what we will see at the end of this are communities across our state that are stronger and more resilient, that we will be able to point to the ways in which we have supported that development, that it will be, as I said in the beginning, a compelling narrative about the value add of this university for the people who make it possible for us to be here. I also think we will see a campus, students, faculty, staff, better than they were five years ago because they know more, they've seen more, they've engaged more with the people of our state. I think we will continue to be able to point to why this is the number one global public institution. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Let me, I got to start with a personal story. I didn't know Anita Brown-Graham until about 10 years ago. I just left the General Assembly and one of our former governors invited me to lunch. And when I got there, there were three places set instead of two. And I didn't know why that was the case until Anita Brown-Graham walked into the door. She had left Carolina for a few years to go to another university where she ran a very dynamic program. And I looked at the governor and I said, well, are you looking for my checkbook or my calendar? And Anita didn't blink and she said, we're looking for both. She was a force to be reckoned with. And she was a great member of the Chancellor's Search Committee and we thank you for all you do, but certainly for this new important initiative. So thank you. Trustee Davis.
Yes, I just wanted to say that it is so appropriate and fitting that you are the Gladys Hall Coach, distinguished professor of public law and government, because you are channeling exactly what Gladys and Albert Coach stood for. This is exactly, this was his vision from day one with the institute. And you are taking it to a whole nother level. And I'm just so grateful that the chancellor has given you this runway and that you have taken it and run with it in a very big way. This is, we have always been, as you said, instrumental to helping solve problems around our state. And this opens the door for others to come to us with their problems and let us be a part of their solutions. And I'm so grateful for all you're doing. Please let us, the trustees, know any way that we can support and help you in this mission.
My wife has my checkbook today.
I'd like to add one thing, too. Anita came to speak, or actually with UNC Television, came to Cleveland County last January and led a town hall discussion about the economy in Cleveland County. And not only was it an excellent presentation, but it generated a lot of goodwill towards UNC, even from state fans and Duke fans and others across our county, just because it was UNC and it was a big deal. She did a great job. Thank you, Will. Trustee Brown?
Yeah, Anita, great work, terrific. I did want to mention with Julia here, Judith here, I'm thinking of Julia, sprung grumbles. And a little bit of the history, one of the benefits of being around a little bit longer on the board is that you have some historical context. And I just remember very vividly one of my first commercialization committee meetings. Lowry Callow had set a great table with a lot of great work for several years, but it was still in the relatively early stages, I think, Judith, of this process. And to now see with the work that you've done, that Lowry laid the foundation for, Phil Clay, who also chaired that committee, Julia, who chaired that committee, and just slow but steady work that's sort of escalated. And hearing the chancellor talk about this has moved from not even having a lot of awareness on campus to having not only awareness, but it is now a competitive advantage for the university in terms of talent and otherwise is really terrific in a relatively short period of time. And so again, I just wanted to, in the normal way of these board meetings, lifting up the champagne glutes to say thank you, but also to just comment on that little historical context and the progress that's been made by a number of people's efforts. So thank you very much.
And Judith, we want to thank you for your presentation. But moreover, we want to thank you for your 11 years of dedicated service to the university. You are embodiment of innovation and entrepreneurship for this campus. And we want to thank you sincerely for all your hard work during these 11 years. And we're going to miss you and we wish you the very best in your retirement. I'd like to recognize Teresa Artis Neal for a resolution.
Resolution of appreciation, Judith Cohn, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill Board of Trustees. Whereas Judith Cohn joined the university in 2009 and in 2015 began her service as the university's first Vice Chancellor for Innovation, Entrepreneurship and Economic Development, and has provided leadership, service and commitment to the university in the state of North Carolina in this critical role. And whereas Ms. Cohn distinguished herself as an invaluable leader, continuously seeking to strengthen an intentional culture of innovation and entrepreneurship on campus and in our communities. And whereas Ms. Cohn created Innovate Carolina, a university-wide initiative for innovation and entrepreneurship, where innovators thrive by developing new ideas to solve the most pressing problems in North Carolina and around the world. And whereas Ms. Cohn implemented the first comprehensive innovation roadmap for Carolina, crafted jointly with the UNC Board of Trustees, senior leaders, alumni, faculty, staff, students and community members, which set the stage for the adoption of innovation as a key pillar in the university's strategic framework, the blueprint for NEXT. And now a strategic plan, Carolina Next, innovations for public good. And whereas Ms. Cohn added Kickstart Venture Services to Innovate Carolina and expanded it to guide and educate faculty as they navigate the complex world of commercializing intellectual property resulting from their research. And whereas Ms. Cohn has been a mentor to student entrepreneurs and under her team's management, the Student Innovation Community 1789 has expanded to more than 250 student members and has supported more than 260 student entrepreneurial teams and ventures. And whereas Ms. Cohn combined several key initiatives, including technology transfer into a unified dedicated unit, the Office of Technology Commercialization, which she has successfully led and bolstered to translate research discoveries into commercial products and services that improve lives, strengthen the economy and generate revenues in university. Whereas building on the relationship with Duke and NC State, Ms. Cohn founded the Carolina Angel Network, whose mission is to support the Carolina entrepreneurial community with an angel investing platform that leverages the power of our alumni network. And whereas Ms. Cohn has built a strong foundation by developing a talented team that will continue to advance the initiatives and programs that she inspired at Carolina as innovation and entrepreneurship remains a top strategic priority for our university. And whereas Ms. Cohn has been a tireless advocate for innovation at the university, a key advisor to the business community and a strategic counselor to boards and other universities seeking to learn from Carolina. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill expresses its sincere and profound gratitude to Judith Cohn and offers its deepest appreciation for her innovative and inspired leadership, her unwavering commitment to the university and to the state of North Carolina. We thank her for her service and wish her the best in her well-deserved retirement in Carolina.
You've heard the motion? Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to be approved?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve this resolution by acclamation.
We have a motion. It's your second. It's trustee Duckett for the discussion debate. If not, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, of course, or none. Judith, congratulations and thank you. Chancellor, thank you again for bringing us, both speakers and for your report today. Let's now turn to our committee reports and let's start with the report of the External Relations Committee Chair Davis.
Thank you, Chairman. The External Relations Committee met yesterday and had several resolutions that have already been approved on the consent agenda. We had reports by both Vice Chancellor Curran and Vice Chancellor Summers that were very encouraging reports about the important work that Vice Chancellor Curran is doing around telling the story of all the ways in which UNC supports and advances our state and the citizens of our state and our nation and world. And then a report from Vice Chancellor Summers about both federal and state opportunities for continuing to for continuing to receive the necessary support to support and encourage our, and promote, and move forward with our important initiatives to make our state better and our nation better. So outstanding reports there. We do have a couple of items for closed session. Thank you, chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me turn now to Vice Chair and Finance Infrastructure Audit Committee, trustee Frye. For the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Infrastructure and Audit Committee met yesterday. There were only two action items, spending authority related to new MRI machine for Marseco Hall, renovation for Fetsor Hall, and a self-liquidating debt resolution that was presented by Vice Chancellor Finance, Nate Knuffman. We also had a development report from David Ruth. We reviewed the annual financial report with Vice Chancellor Finance, Nate Knuffman, and then had a budget update as well, and heard from the dean of the School of Education on what he has done at the school. And it was an inspiring presentation about making the most of his resources in a way that is a model for the rest of the university. Thank you.
I take a motion from the committee of those two action items. So move from the committee. Is there a second to that motion? Second, trustee Davis, for the discussion debate. Not, will vote on those two action items. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Frye. Now I need to call on trustee Duckett for a report of the University Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a full meeting yesterday that led off with a great presentation by Sarah Trill on the Program for Public Discourse. And a lot of information there about where they're going and where they've been and the importance of it to this university. We also have an action item, the continuation of the tenure clock extension, which was presented by Ann Fox and Ron Strauss, and that will be given as a motion from the committee to the full board for approval. We had an employee forum update from Shana Hill. Shana is in her last year leading the forum. She's been amazing in that role. Carolina graduate that presents the challenges to the staff and employees. And it's so important what they, especially to thank them for all they've been through in this pandemic and the help they've brought to this university. We had a great economic development strategy update from the chancellor and from Doug Rothwell. And we're pleased to be a part of that and work with the community of Chapel Hill to do more in the economic development area from not only Franklin Street, but all of downtown, and the importance of the tie between the university and the community. So that would conclude my update, except for coming forward on the motion for approval for the continuation of tenure clock extension.
We have a motion from the committee on the tenure clock extensions. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Trustee Davis, for the discussion debate on that motion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Now I'd like to recognize trustee Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In light of the current events nationally and on campus, including our law school and the excellent presentation yesterday on the Program for Public Discourse, I believe it's timely that this Board of Trustees reaffirm our faculty council statement on speech at the university. Adopted in 2018, our faculty council statement on speech expresses our longstanding commitment to protect and promote freedom of expression as core to our educational mission. If you'll bear with me just for a minute or two, here are a few excerpts from the faculty council's statement on speech that I'd like to lift up. The University of North Carolina Chapel Hill is committed to the production and dissemination of knowledge through open inquiry and fearless exchange of a wide range of ideas. As the oldest state university in the country with a long and complex history, we are ever aware that speaking out on controversial issues often raises opposition and efforts to silence the outspoken. Therefore, the faculty of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill hereby resolve to endorse the principles for the promotion and protection of free speech on campus that were originally articulated by the faculty of the University of Chicago. Faculty statement, our faculty statement references the following from the University of Chicago's statement. The ideas of different members of the university community will often and quite naturally conflict, but it is not the proper role of the university to attempt to shield individuals from ideas and opinions they find unwelcome, disagreeable, or even deeply offensive. Although the university greatly values civility, and although all members of the university community share in the responsibility for maintaining a climate of mutual respect, concerns about civility and mutual respect can never be used as a justification for closing off discussion of ideas. However offensive or disagreeable those ideas may be to some members of our community. The faculty council statement concludes as follows. Through calm waters and rough, the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill is advanced by our commitment to aspirational principles that guide our public conversation, no matter how unsettling. By reaffirming a commitment to full and open inquiry, robust debate, and civil discourse, we also affirm the intellectual rigor and open-mindedness that our university may bring to any forum where difficult, challenging, and even disturbing ideas are presented. At Carolina, we have long known that light and liberty are the essential tools that allow problems to be seen, ideas to be tested, and solutions to be found. At a moment of deep social and societal division and flux, we embrace these truths once again. I'd like to then promote the following resolution for consideration by our board.
And trustee Brown, I think TJ, you're going to post that on the, post the proposed motion. Tell me, can you?
With a bit of an editorial comment leading in that I value tremendously the statement of our faculty that talks about civility and mutual respect and the importance of humility in that. But that also leads us to being, to having open and authentic dialogue and conversations. So with that, I'd like to read the following resolution and hope to receive a second. This is a resolution to affirm the faculty council's statement on speech at the university. Whereas as the oldest state university in the nation, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill has a longstanding commitment to protect and promote freedom of expression as core to its educational mission. And whereas in 2018, the faculty council of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill reaffirmed this commitment to free and open inquiry by adopting the statement on speech of the university, at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, which set forth, among other things, that the quote, "ability to speak freely, debate vigorously, and engage deeply with differing viewpoints is the bedrock of our aspirations at Carolina," end quote. And whereas in 2020, the Board of Trustees adopted the strategic plan, Carolina Next, Innovations for Public Good, which set forth, among other things, that quote, "A Carolina education must focus on the skills needed for public engagement, including listening, perspective-taking, civil discussion, and frank disagreement, along with the critical evaluation of evidence, probabilistic thinking, and analysis of casual pathways," end quote. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill strongly supports and affirms the faculty council's statement on speech at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill as set forth in Resolution 2018-3 of the faculty council, a copy of which is attached to this resolution. That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard the motion, trustee Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Hopkins, for the discussion and debate. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, trustee Brown. This number of the board is now going to go into closed session to deal with a couple of matters permitted to be done in closed session. So I'll entertain a motion from trustee Artist Neal to do that. And then we'll need a few minutes to walk through the room and go into closed session. I do anticipate there'll be a couple of action items following the closed session. Trustee Artist Neal.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.1, subsection A, subsection 1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged information under section 126-22, and also pursuant to section 143-318.11, subsection A, subsection 2, subsection A, subsection 3, subsection A, subsection 5, subsection A, subsection 6, subsection A, subsection 7, subsection 8, 8, and subsection 9.
You've heard the motion.
Second.
Second, trustee Davis. Further discussion rate on that motion. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We will be in closed session. TJ, if you would brief us when we're ready.
We're live on YouTube.
We are back in open session. Recognize Chair Chuck Duckett for the University Affairs Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two action items coming out of University Affairs related to personnel items. We have both EHRA faculty and non-faculty items from March to 2021, and asking also for approval for the HR audit report for this year as well. So let's come forward as a motion to the full board.
Is there a second? Second, Davis. Is there further discussion or debate on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Is there any further business to come before the board?
Second.
Hearing none, without objection, we stand adjourned.